I just breathe in and out. You want to do that?
Yes, of course. I hate it.
I know. Yeah. I feel like trickling down.
We can reconvene our meeting to open session. The board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a contractual matter, a legal matter, and confidential personnel matter. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Catherine Natter.
John Walston.
Meredith Moriarty.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Christine Beck.
Robert Teeger.
And Judy Kehoe.
I'm thinking we might have a couple of pig students with us tonight. If we do, your obligation is to stay until nine o'clock or if the meeting is over, whichever comes first. And then you can come up and sign out, and if you need a signature, you can see any of the members that are up here. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the October 12, 2022, regular board meeting.
I move second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Three meeting reports. First up is our superintendent's report.
Sure. Thank you. I'd just like to remind everyone that on Tuesday, November 1st, we are having a student safety forum at Bethlehem High School on the auditorium. Begins at 7:00 PM and will go till about 8:30. Some of the topics that we'll be discussing are general school safety practices and proactive measures, student mental health resources, both in our schools and the community, families as partners in keeping our students in school safe, and student cellphone use at school and at home. We have sent a couple emails out. There's a Google form there for people to submit questions in advance. We'll have a panel of people there who will be able to respond to those questions, and we'll also be providing a time for people who attend to ask questions as the evening goes on. So hopefully, we'll have a good turnout. Also, I just want to say happy birthday and thank you to Judy Kehoe, as this will be her last board meeting. I've had the privilege of working with Judy for the past 15 years. When I first met Judy, I remember thinking, is she always this bubbly? And I soon found out that she sometimes and often refers to herself as Suzie or Mary Sunshine. Being a superintendent requires that you rely on many people, especially your chief financial officer. This is one area where you literally cannot afford big mistakes. Judy has truly been my right-hand person for the past 15 years, someone I've relied on to help lead the district and make the right decisions for our students and families. She's patient, caring, and one of the most dedicated people I've worked with in my career. B.C. has been so fortunate to have Judy as part of the district leadership team, and I know I could not have asked for a better teammate. Congratulations, Judy, on your retirement, and while you'd be greatly missed here, you certainly deserve Wednesday nights off. That's my report.
On behalf of the board, I will second that for everything you have done for us. And I know we've said it privately, but again, congratulations and happy birthday, which is today. Does anybody have any questions for Judy? Next is our board report. And first, I just wanted to report out to you all that I attended the NISBA Annual Business Meeting on October 17th. And it was a lengthy meeting that went through, I think, a total of 43 different resolutions. And you should have gotten by email a report from NISBA on which ones were adopted and which ones were rejected. So I'm not going to go through them all now. But if you take a look at it, if you have any questions, some of them had no discussion, some had very lengthy discussion, and if you take a look and are curious, just let me know. And then tomorrow, I think Christine and I are, I'm not sure, I don't think it's just the two of us, are traveling to Syracuse for the NISBA convention. So we can report out more on that at our next meeting, next week. On Monday, we had a, two different committee meetings. We had one to, that's looking at our superintendent evaluation tool. And I think we made some good progress in terms of trying to streamline and consolidate the document and the tool that we're using. So look for some additional progress on that going forward. And then we also had a policy committee meeting and went through a number of policies which you will likely see on our next agenda. So I think that's all for me. I don't know if anyone else has something to... Oh, one other thing I wanted to give a congratulations to all of our music faculty that participated in the music faculty recital on Monday evening. I saw part of it, and the part I saw was fabulous, and I know, I think Christine saw the whole thing and...
Saw the whole thing, and it was really fabulous. The auditorium was packed. I was shocked at the number of students that came out, and they were really excited to see their teachers perform, and it was tremendous. And I just happened to find out from Holly on Monday night because I was here for a meeting, and it was such a treat. So I want to thank them for doing that. I really appreciate it, and so did the students, clearly.
It was, it's a great event. But that's all I have. If anyone else has anything they would like to add?
I just wanted to add the thank you to Judy for her exemplary leadership in the district. And she leads by example and preserving the financial position of the district. I mean, it's been just amazing being here and working with you, and I'm sorry to see you go, and I'll miss you.
I will miss all of you. Thank you for allowing me to geek out over these years where I get all excited about the finance stuff. But it's a joy, it's a passion. I love working in local government. I will absolutely miss it, and I expect to keep in touch. You don't build these kinds of relationships and friendships after 15 years. So they're very important to me, and I will miss that and will do all I can to preserve it.
Thank you. Next are our student reports. Do we have anybody from the high school Student Senate with us? You want to come up to the microphone?
Hi, I'm Yuna Chung, and I'm the Secretary of the Student Senate. At our latest meeting, we approved two new clubs, the Muslim Club and the Helping Hands Club. Additionally, we've been in the process of electing new freshman senators to join us for this school year. And we've also been seeing some other really cool projects being done by clubs at the high school, like the Alana Club and the Active Minds Club, who came together to pass out ribbons to raise awareness for mental health. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from the middle school Student Council?
Hi, I'm Ellie.
Hi, I'm Reagan.
Hi, I'm Addie, and we are here to give you updates on the middle school.
The Halloween Ball is this Friday. Imagine 800 to 900 people in costume. This is the first ball we've had that has been able to have... Sorry. This has been the first ball we've had since the start of the pandemic, and we're so grateful.
Our fall sports seasons are coming to a close, and all of our teams experienced loss of success. We want to congratulate all participants and thank all of our coaches, parents, and school leadership for these opportunities.
Student Council is planning a series of School Spirit Days. Our first is this Friday during school. It's Black and Orange Day. Monday is Comfy Day, and more to come.
Our B.C. Mess musical just chose the cast of Wizard of Oz, and they've just began rehearsals.
This week is, is week number eight of the first quarter, and students seem to be doing well and being ready to end the quarter. Thank you for inviting us to present at the board meeting, and we look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you. And then I think we have some friends from Elsmere.
Sure do.
Well, I'm really happy to be hosting this evening, and welcome all of you to Elsmere Elementary. We have, as you can see, a number of 5th grade volunteers who would like to talk to you a little bit about some things that they hold near and dear to their heart. They selected their topics, and they volunteered for this event. So without further ado, I will turn it over to our 5th graders.
Hi, my name is Grace Letty, and today we are going to talk to you about how Elsmere was named one of the Blue Ribbon Schools.
Did you know that only 264 schools nationwide get the Blue Ribbon Award each year?
Well, Elsmere was selected as one of the Blue Ribbon Schools because each day, Elsmere students and staff worked their hardest in various ways. We made every effort we could, we showed up at school, and we showed Elsmere pride.
Hi, my name is Tess Larkin, and ever since I was in kindergarten, I've always seen a banner in the hall saying that Elsmere is a 2013 Blue Ribbon School. I never really knew what that meant until a few weeks ago, I heard that yet again, Elsmere School won the Blue Ribbon Award.
This all shows that Elsmere can do anything as a team.
The students did it in 2013, and we did it in 2022.
Hello, my name is Isaac. One of the awesome things about Elsmere are the buddy classes. Buddies are when one, when an older class is paired with a younger class, and they do activities throughout the year. It was a long time ago, but when I was in kindergarten, it was just so cool for the 5th graders to come to our class and help with projects. And now, in 5th grade, it is just so fun to help the kindergartners.
Hello, my name is Liam Morrissey. Today, I'm going to talk about one of the multiple musical opportunities here at Elsmere Elementary School. That thing is orchestra. Orchestra has shown to help with memory and attention spans, hand-eye coordination, and motor skills. More than that, it helps build skills that you can use later in life, like teamwork, self-confidence, and self-reliance. It also helps build and maintain a sense of responsibility. In my experience, violin has helped me build confidence in everything that I do, and I hope to continue it into high school and beyond.
Hi, my name is Nora Cardagina. Elsmere has a lot of special events. Some of the events are the senior assembly, where seniors come that went to Elsmere come back to do an assembly, Halloween Happenings, Walk to School Day, Lip Sync, and Field Day. Oh, and don't forget, One Book, One School.
Hello, my name is Griffin Simmons. I will be talking about Makerspace. Every week on Tuesdays, the 4th and 5th graders are allowed to go to the library for 25 minutes of their recess time. There is 3D printing, robotics, circuits, and more. A lot of what I just listed is STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math. Last year, when I would do Makerspace, I would be using the 3D printer. Doing this made me have a spark, when I'm older, to own a business of 3D printing shop. Makerspace is an open time for kids to learn and create and make friends. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matilda Sugar. I am here to talk about student leadership opportunities. Elsmere has done a great job teaching students to be responsible leaders. Starting in kindergarten, small things like lost and found teach students about being responsible. As students get older, opportunities for leadership increase. For example, our 3rd graders run the gently-used book sale. Our 4th graders take care of our flag. And our 5th graders run our morning announcements and assembly color guard. Before school started this year, students in grades 3, 4, and 5 served as ambassadors, introducing new families to Elsmere. Students can also create and lead programs based on their interests. For example, my friend Grace and I started our school composting program last year. This year, we hope to begin a student council. Taking responsibility and growing leadership skills is a great opportunity for all Elsmere students. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Penny Hurt. Thank you for coming to Elsmere this evening. We appreciate learning from the adults in our community. In fact, that is what I would like to talk about. Elsmere Elementary School is almost 100 years old. Over decades, many people have contributed to the learning environment. For example, therapy dogs come as reading partners, and members of the VFW text students, teach students how to lower and fold the flag. Members of the Elsmere Fire Department visit to discuss fire safety. High school students visit to teach Spanish, French, and math skills. And next month, veterans will be here for a special honor. As COVID restrictions, as COVID restrictions ease, we look forward to more opportunities to learn and grow from our neighbors.
Hello, my name is Graham Giglio. I am talking, I am talking about the staff here at Elsmere. The staff at Elsmere, everyone is so kind, from the teachers to the noon hour aides. The noon hour aides make sure you are safe, and the teachers make learning fun. And can't forget about Mrs. Claus. She takes pictures and knows everyone's name. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you so much, you guys. You want to come up here for a second? I have a pin for you. Nice job, you guys. You're great. Thanks again. It was fun to learn all those different things about Elsmere. We appreciate it. Oh, and you guys certainly are welcome to stay for the presentations, but you by no means need to if you would like to go home. Next on our agenda are our presentations this evening. We have two, and our first presentation is on special education, intensive skills changes, and E.S.Y. And so invite Kathy Johnston and Sarah Flannery to come on up. And a few other... oh!
Oh, good evening, everybody. That's a tough act to follow, I have to admit. I'm not sure that we're going to be quite as much fun, but we're going to certainly try, so. Tonight, we're going to share with you some information about our E.S.Y. program, as well as our continuum of services, particularly talking about our intensive skills class. Both of these are topics that have come up in the last few months, and people had questions, so we wanted to make sure we got to address them. So before we start with the information, I want to make sure that I introduce our Team Sess. So to my left is Sarah Flannery, who is the Assistant Director of Special Education and the E.S.Y. Coordinator. Sitting next to her is Laura Bronson, who's our Elementary CSC Chair. Then we have Laura Rosa, who is our Middle School CSC Chair, and as of this year, picking up our preschool committee. And then at the end, we have Deena Sanders, who is our High School CSC Chair. Everybody's got a few other jobs splattered throughout there, but that's the primary jobs, so. So we're going to start with our E.S.Y. program, so at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Sarah.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, so thank you. As Kathy mentioned, part of my responsibility here in Bethlehem is to coordinate and provide support with the daily implementation of our extended school year program. So I'll be able to speak to that for all of you tonight. I wanted to review some of the data and update some of the information that I had shared last year, so we'll start by going through some of that information. Just this past summer, we had 126 students were recommended for E.S.Y. That happens through our annual review process in the spring. Of those students that were recommended, 96 students did attend our summer program. That was really consistent with the prior year, where we also had 30 students who were recommended that did not end up attending, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. The staffing numbers were down slightly from the previous year, but that was specifically due to our enrollment numbers being slightly down, as well as some other shifts that I'll talk about here on the next slide. So as I mentioned, we were down a couple of staff members overall this summer. One of those was a nurse. Last summer, we had two nurses. This summer, we were really fortunate that we could have the entire E.S.Y. program housed at Eagle Elementary, which required us to only have one nurse on staff. I think probably our, one of our greatest improvements last summer was that we added a school counselor to our staff. She continued the social skills program that the school counselors implement during the school year into each of our classes over the summer, as well as provide the support of a full coordinated care team with our social worker and our school psychologist. So we had a full team supporting social-emotional needs, as well as any student crisis needs over the summer. Our OT position was, was our toughest position to fill last summer. We ended up with two staff members doing job sharing on that particular position. One of the things that we had some questions about last year that we wanted to update again this year was how many Bethlehem staff work our summer program. It was very consistent from the previous year, not really a lot of change from 2021 in terms of how many staff continue to work over the summer that are Bethlehem staff. The biggest area of change up there that you'll see is the related services staff. We had six employees that were hired from outside of our district, where the previous summer, we only hired three staff members outside of the district. So planning for annual reviews, or for, for E.S.Y. starts, well, now, but with much more urgency in January and February. As I mentioned, our annual reviews begin on, well, they begin on February 1st, and that is the process where we recommend students for extended school year programming. So that starts in February. We start to look at the numbers, we start to make projections about how many students we'll have in the summer. We post the positions in March and April, do interviews, and start the hiring process. And then in May and June, we begin to finalize some of the details, coordinate with our transportation department, as well as provide communication to families. Again, this was, the, the classes that we ran last summer were consistent with the previous two years. And by that, I mean that we had special class programming, which includes our skills classes, our intensive skills classes, our RISE program, which is our high school program. That stands for Ready for Independent Success and Employment. And we also had those three programs running for three hours, five days a week. For the previous three years, we also had specialized instruction programming, and that was provided in English Language Arts and Math. And that program was provided on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday only. Additionally, we have some students who are recommended for only related services, and their parents typically would bring them in and pick them up just so they can participate in related services in the summer. That might be occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, or counseling. Just to give you a few numbers on those, the skills students, we had 29 students enrolled in our skills classes, 12 students enrolled in our intensive skills classes, 12 students enrolled in our high school RISE program, 37 students received specialized instruction, and six students were related service-only students. Our attendance data was looking really good this past summer. We saw an increase in all but one area of consistent summer attendance. The only area that saw a slight decrease was our two middle school classes, which were down from 94% the previous year to 87% in 2022. Every other area saw an increase in the attendance of our students. So that was something we felt was worthy of a celebration, for sure. We did, again, this year, send two different surveys. We sent one survey to our families who, who had students who attended the summer program. And then we had a separate survey that we sent to families who chose not to send their student to summer programming. I'm going to talk first about the survey that was sent to families who did attend E.S.Y. programming. Again, we had 96 students who attended summer programming. Of those 96 students, we heard from 27 families. That number represents 28% response rate, which is really consistent with what we had received the previous summer from our families. We asked the same questions because we wanted to compare... We asked the same questions because we wanted to compare the feedback from year to year. We were pleased that our families felt that the E S Y services were individualized to their child's needs. We had an increase in that area. One area where we did get some, maybe some more critical communication, that was an area that we needed to see some improvement on, was our communication. And I can understand why that happened. And so already planning ahead to next year, I think there's two things we can do differently that will help improve that number for us. One will be to send the class, the teacher, the teacher assignments from the S E S office. Previously, we would ask our teachers to do that. As you saw, not all of our teachers are B C employees, so some of the information was trickling to them a little bit later than we would have really preferred. So we will handle that communication from our office this summer, and we will also be asking teachers to do weekly communication with our families, so that they can have that more regular communication from the program. Two other questions that we repeated was, did our families receive the child's progress monitoring feedback? At the end of the summer, we do update all of our students' goals and send a progress report home for students who are in person on that last day of school that goes home with them. Some of our students were not in person on the last day of school. They may have been on vacation, so then we mailed the progress report home later. Some of our families reported to us that they would have changed their answer on that question if they had gotten it after they got their mail. So confident that our families did receive the progress report. And then the last question was, did your child show regression in any of their I E P goal areas? And some of our families did, in fact, feel that their child experienced regression over the summer. Just as a review, part of the purpose of E S Y is to not see regression. So that's something we want to make sure we're targeting that goal with a very high success rate. So one of the things I did was to look at individual students' goal data that was documented on their I E Ps. And I'm pleased to say that for the majority of our students, we saw no or minimal regression in most or all areas. And I did do a pretty deep dive into the individual I E Ps of those students. Okay, so there's also a piece of the survey that asks parents for open-ended question about feedback for us. This is a sample of the responses. Again, we had 27 responses, so clearly they are not all represented. All families did not even answer that question, though, either. So what I did was look through the survey data and look for themes, look for repeated answers, and tried, attempted to summarize these here for you. We did receive many positive statements about both the programs and the staff. We did receive some statements about the challenges that families experienced with planning around E S Y. We did receive some feedback about making the day longer for some students. And we did receive some feedback about, with appreciation for the length of time of the E S Y day, allowing families to balance their other opportunities outside of school. The next two slides are going to speak to parent feedback that we have received from our families who declined E S Y. So as I mentioned, 30 families declined our E S Y program. We heard back from only five of those 30 families. So I wanted to be able to speak with confidence about why more of those families declined. So we have one slide here that's going to talk about the survey feedback, and one that's going to talk about what we know about our families when they are making decisions about declining. So it really comes down to four main reasons that families tell us they're choosing not to send their child to E S Y. And those four reasons are camp, choice of tutoring, vacation opportunities, and some families just want more downtime for their students. So they elect to take that opportunity and just take a break. Those four reasons carry through with great consistency in terms of why our students are declining. So although we only heard back from these five families, I'll talk on the next slide a bit more about what we know from going through the C S E annual review process. So when we make a recommendation for E S Y, a lot of times, the families may tell us right in that moment, "Thank you. I understand that my child qualifies, but because of those four reasons, camp, tutoring, vacation, or downtime, we're going to opt to not send a child to E S Y this summer." Looking at the 30 students who did decline, you can see a breakdown up there of what programs those students were recommended for. I thought that the specialized instruction number might be a little bit high. So in conversing with my colleague Laura, who chaired all of those meetings, you know, she confirmed for me that it really still comes down to those four main reasons. Looking at those last three groups, you know, it's a little trickier to talk about those groups, only because they are such small numbers, and I want to protect the confidentiality of those families. But I will say that additional reasons would include things like jobs for some of our high school students. They choose to work in the summer. Some of our students were able to begin their post-21 programs already. And again, some families chose to have some downtime. We also talked to our staff about what they thought about the program at the end of the summer. Our staff, I mean, when I think about the different opportunities that I have in my role here, being such a part of E S Y, I know I've shared this with the board last year, is really one of the coolest parts of it. It's a really, it's a staff that comes back every year. They're excited to be able to do it. They call themselves a family. They call themselves a team, and they take great pride in running a program that children want to come to, even in the summertime. They talk about the program and how it offers opportunity to participate in fun activities while learning, and the overall benefits that they get to see for the students. Our staff also had some recommendations for us. I'll mention two specifically right now. One is an opportunity to share jobs. Some felt that might make them more willing to want to work in the summer. Some felt that they want us to maintain this program that is meeting the student needs. And then there was two recommendations about school-to-work and adding art, music, and P E back into our E S Y program. When I look at these recommendations as a whole, I see a balance of really veteran staff that's come back every summer. So they're speaking about the past of E S Y. They're speaking of what the past few years have meant for E S Y, and they're speaking to what they hope the future of E S Y looks like. And I think we can capture some of those as we plan for the future. So we, as a S E S leadership team, really felt like, you know, we have an opportunity in front of us to look and restructure potentially our E S Y programming. So we kind of looked at it as a blank slate and thought, what is it that our kids need? What is it that we want to give them? And how can we continue to make this a successful program for our students? Because I want to keep in mind, as we, you know, looked through all of these pieces, the feedback, the student data, the feedback from families and from staff, you know, we feel good about the work that we do in the summer for our families. But we also felt like we could probably do some more, and we wanted to be able to do some more. So what we're looking at doing in 2023 is expanding our intensive skills program and our RISE program to, from a three-hour to a four-hour program for five days a week. This will impact about 20 to 25 students. We're also looking at keeping our special class and skills programs at three hours for five days a week, and this would impact about 25 or 30 students. And finally, we're looking at replacing that specialized instruction program, that three-day-a-week program, to a five-day-a-week special class program. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about the rationale for those changes. But thinking about numbers of sections, we ran 11 sections next year. That may increase slightly, but not to anything that we haven't historically been able to accommodate. So thinking about the shifts for our intensive skills and our RISE students, now, this is the one that would go from three hours to four hours. You know, I definitely wanted to celebrate that dive into the data, which showed that our students are meeting their goals and that they are successful. So I didn't, certainly didn't want to lose track of that. But I definitely wanted to share the sentiment that we have received, that with more time comes more opportunities. So what would that look like? At the high school, that would look like opportunities for work experiences. Last year, we provided, well, we didn't provide, we sent our high school aides to a training where they became job coaches. They learned the skills required to be job coaches. One thing I will say is our aides to students with disabilities do work in the summer with a really reliable level. So we would benefit from that training in that we could utilize their expertise to continue some job experiences for our high school students in the summer. I think this is the fun part, because we could also, for our younger kids, look at those non-academic experiences. It might be an art project in the classroom. It might be buddying with another class to do a fun activity outside or a game. It might be just a relaxed game time with peers for socialization. That's where we have space now to look at what additional opportunities we'll be able to add in for this group of students. When we made our decisions, our proposals about shifts here to increase some of our programming, we really wanted to balance that increase with some feedback that we have received from parents that have said, "Everything is great. Don't change it too much." So we tried to really create a balanced response to the feedback that we've gotten. And then thinking about our specialized instruction shifts, looking into the data on these group of kids, we did see more inconsistent goal acquisition, especially with our youngest learners. So we believe that by increasing this time for instruction, we're going to be able to allow more consistency, more flexibility with scheduling-related services, and it will allow us to balance some of our class sizes as well, looking at next summer. So we knew that some of these shifts would not be without potential barriers, so we wanted to make sure to do our homework on this. So in collaborating with the Transportation Department, we know that they can do two bus runs for us, because we'll need a bus run for our students who are attending for three hours, as well as a bus run for our students who are attending four hours. And transportation is not, that is not a barrier at all. Additionally, they surveyed their staff to make sure they would be able to staff the additional time required to provide those runs. And again, they were confident, based on the feedback they got from their staff, that they would be able to support those additional bussing needs. We did want to make sure we could staff it confidently. So we did reach out to staff that have worked with us for the past few years. Most staff indicated that they would return. Some staff indicated that the shift, the increase, may impact their decision to return, and some said they may choose not to return, but it has nothing to do with the shifts. It has to do with other personal decisions in their lives. We wanted to make sure also that we were allowing time for food, because with the increase of the program, we typically run 8:30 to 11:30. We'd be looking at 8:30 to 12:30 for some of our students. So we would continue to provide time for them to have a healthy snack within that day. So in conclusion, for the E S Y portion of the presentation, we are looking at an overall increase for our programming for our students. We, as a leadership team, are excited in the opportunities that can create for our students and the space that that will create for additional non-academic tasks. We are also, you know, confident that we have heard the feedback and that we're balancing that different feedback that we've received while looking at the successes that our students have achieved over the past few years. But mostly, you know, as we build new opportunities within the E S Y program, we know that there is a space where we can do that, and we're looking forward to being able to do that for our students.
Thank you, Sarah. We're going to go through the other pieces that we wanted to talk about, and then there'll certainly be time for questions. So another area that had come up that families had had questions on was our intensive skills program. So our intensive skills program provides specially-designed instruction in the area of functional skills, academics, social, communication, daily living, and basic life skills. Students learn literacy and math at their instructional levels, consistent with their I E P. So our intensive skills, one of the reasons that questions had come up, the intensive skills program has run here at Bethlehem for 16 years. And over the course of time, the numbers have shifted a bit based on the numbers of students needing that program. So for the last few years, we've had four sections of that program. We had two elementary sections, an intermediate section, and then the secondary and the RISE program. So four altogether. Our numbers... Everybody okay? I don't know what that was, but our numbers going into this year, or midway through last year, had decreased quite a bit. So this year, we're running a K4 program, a 5-9 program, and then a high school program. So there had been a little bit of a shift. We've been in to see all the programs. They're running beautifully, and we're going to give you some information in a minute about a day in the life of some of those programs. So just wanted to refresh people. On the bottom here is a bit of our continuum. We always use that word in special education, all of the services that we offer. So we have related services at all levels, but there are certainly students that are receiving related services only. Consultant teacher services, at the elementary level, we've reduced some of that. We have resource room programming. Then we have both our co-teach, which is at the elementary level, much higher numbers of that this year, which was a real positive in feedback that we had received. Our skills and RISE program, and then our college transition program. And then we have our intensive skills program. And then at the end of that continuum is our out-of-district services for students who, we don't have an appropriate program in district. So at this point, I'm going to ask first Laura Bronson to come up and talk about, a little bit about the day in the life of students in the intensive skills program at the elementary level.
Thank you, Kathy. It's my pleasure to talk about our elementary intensive skills program, and to have the opportunity to highlight the amazing things that our intensive skills team is doing every day here at Elsmere, as well as our students, who work incredibly hard every day that they come to school. So on the next slide, we show a typical day in our elementary intensive skills program is different for every one of our students. And that's because the hallmark of our intensive skills program is that it is highly individualized. So every one of our students, this year, we have seven in our elementary program, has their own individual daily schedule. So it's a very busy place. There's lots of coming and going, lots of engagement happening on different levels. So every student may participate in a bit of a different day. Many of those activities are listed here. To highlight a few of them, every student starts their day working at their school business, which is Teachers Helpers, Inc., where teachers here at Elsmere submit jobs for our students to assist them with. They are partnered with older students in the building to assist them during that time. So that's an opportunity for inclusion here that we'll talk about more at a future slide here. The other wonderful thing that we have in our program this year is that many of our students are participating in their specials, which is music, art, P E, and library, with their buddy class. So a buddy class would be a class that's at the same level. So like, a grade one student would go with a grade one buddy class to art, music, would go with a grade-one buddy class to art, music, PE, and they travel with an aide to those programs, another opportunity for inclusion there. For our academics in our Intensive Skills Program, we utilize the ACE curriculum, which is the Autism Curriculum Encyclopedia, and so that is an individually-taught program, but we also utilize centers to do some teamwork on that as well. So our English Language Arts and Math is taught using the ACE program. We also have centers that happen multiple times a week, so our social worker will push in and do some play skill development and some social skill training with our students. We have our speech pathologists that push in and do language lessons. Our motor teachers, our PT and OT, push in and do a lot of wonderful movement and activities with the students. Another hallmark of the Intensive Skills Program is the work we do for activities of daily living. So oftentimes, if you stop by the classroom, you'll see students working on folding clothes, sweeping, utilizing utensils, learning how to sort different laundry, how to bake and cook and measure. So they get a lot of opportunities for increasing those daily living skills. Our students do go to lunch and recess with their peer group or their buddy class, and they have other additional opportunities during the school day to push into our general education classrooms, whether that be for read aloud, for choice time, for a special project. They're always welcomed, and the teachers here at Elsmere are wonderful to reach out and invite our Intensive Skills students to participate in their classrooms. So to show you a few pictures, it's hard for me to see. So it would be your upper left is our social worker, Ms. Christopher, she's pushing in there for a play center, where she's facilitating play with two of our students. Moving then from your left to right is Mrs. McCurdy, who is one of our special education teachers that pushes in twice a day to help support that academic time, so she's working with two of our older students. The next slide over is one of our wonderful aides, Mrs. Geary, working with a student on the ACE curriculum. And then the next picture is, I believe kindergarten, Mrs. Claus. Kindergarten PE, where our Intensive Skills students are with their buddy class, participating in PE. And then to go back down to the lower left there, that is circle time, that's Mrs. Mara, our phenomenal Intensive Skills teacher, having circle time in class. The next picture over is one of our students having lunch, and that is first-grade lunch, I believe. And then the next picture is Mrs. Mara doing some academic time with one of the students, a lot of that individualized work using technology in the classroom. And then our choice time, just having fun, playing in class, is that last picture there. So we wanted to include a parent voice in tonight's presentation. Kelly Kohler was kind enough to share her personal experience with you all tonight. I will not read this in its entirety, but I do want to highlight the last two paragraphs, so I'll read those to you. "The teachers treasure her in a way that any parent of a special-needs child could only hope for, and that shows through as she exudes that confidence and joy now, not only at home but at school. The word that comes to mind when thinking about how to explain what this has meant for Kaia's little nine-year-old life is hope. Thank you to all of you who work so hard to make sure that the many needs of children in this district are not just met but exceeded." And I think Mrs. Claus is going to come up and talk about some more of that inclusivity that we have here at Elsmere.
Thank you so much for letting me jump in and say a few words. Primarily, what I would like to say is that having the Intensive Skills class and students at our school is truly a gift to the rest of the school here at Elsmere. All of the students who are here are Elsmere students, and we cherish every single one of them. The Intensive Skills class brings so much joy to everybody here. We are truly integrated in, really in all that we do, besides teachers helpers, lunch, recess, specials. Intensive Skills students are just, they're part of the student body. They participate in our assemblies, they participate in all of our special events, and really, the parents are a part of everything that goes on here at school. So also, we're very fortunate to have some of our older students who were previously here come back to Elsmere and assist in the cafeteria or reading with younger students. The B.C. Barkery is also working with a third-grade class. So overall, it's such a wonderful program that brings so much to everybody, really, here at our school, and I feel very fortunate to have the Intensive Skills Program as a part of Elsmere. Turn it over to middle school.
It's perfect, because this is exactly what we want. We want this foundation built at the elementary level, and then they get to come to the middle school, to our magical place there. So I appreciate you listening and hearing out what a typical day in the middle school is like. And much like the elementary school, the day varies from student to student. We have the same focus in mind, that community building, that working together, and the skills that are needed for life. And it's important, we have the bell going off in the middle school, right? So our students are still following a bell schedule. To point out, Period II this year is new for us. We do have unified PE, which we're very excited about, and it is, we have had tremendous feedback. I do want to thank our PE teachers and staff and schedule makers and limited space, and we've made it all work, and it's just been incredible to see. The other times that, you know, all students have our home base, we use this time for student choice. Our students are in lunch and recess with their peers. Recession at the middle school is running around, that is what they want to do. They want to get in your face and see each other, and they're unlike, you couldn't tell who's who during a recess at the middle school, and it's joyful, chaotic awesomeness. And then, you know, like Period IX, you know, and like, we do ELA, math, science, social studies, the core subjects, but I think it's really important, too, we also follow through with the ACE curriculum from the elementary school. But, you know, that communication with parents is part of our program, and every day, the parents are made aware of what we've been working on in the skills classes. We use CSAW or another communication where the parents can send pictures back and the students can see those throughout the day, so that's a piece of our program as well. And here are some pictures of our kiddos. On the previous slides, you would have seen the pictures of some of that unified PE happening, but, you know, in the middle school, we focus so much on that communication, and you're going to see in there some of those devices that are being used. It's truly important for our students to be able to express their needs and wants, and we always have, like Elsmere has in mind for us, at the middle school, we keep in mind what's needed for the high school. So, you know, curriculum is individualized, it's based on the students' needs. But you can also see in some of these pictures here, we are making preparations for our school store that we have, again, something carried out throughout the district. And then, oh, just like what Laura had, I also asked for feedback from one of our parents, and I will read this little blurb. "The Intensive Skills Program has offered our middle school student a chance to develop nicely into his teen years. He is learning valuable skills that will help him lead an independent life at home and employment. He also feels included in the general ed population, with best buddies, I'm glad you mentioned that, being a great bridge. As a parent with special-needs child, it feels so good to be in a school district who values him and makes him feel like an important part of his community." Thank you. And that is from the Thau family. Thank you so much.
So we specifically concentrated on the elementary and the middle school program, because that's where the questions had come from. We've previously done in-service trainings and sessions here at the Board on both our Rise Program and our College Transition Program, and are looking forward to doing a little bit more as we expand some of those programs. But we wanted to make sure we were answering questions, so that's where our presentation came tonight. So at this time, we'd like to see if there's any questions.
Any of you have any questions for Kathy or Sarah? Kathy?
Yeah. Just a couple, going back to Sarah's presentation, and thank you so much. This was really wonderful and informative, and I really appreciate all of you taking the time to put this together tonight. Two questions. The related services, when we're looking at ESY, the related services that were offered at least this past year were focused at the elementary level, or if I understood correctly, the elementary level, and I was just wondering why? Are there not students who need that, or did I misunderstand the presentation?
It's, related services are K-12.
Okay.
The six students that came in for related services only, those were six elementary students.
Cool, thank you for running that through. And then you highlighted the question from, in the parent survey on Slide 8, that had focused on asking if their student had regressed. I was wondering, did, was there a question about advancement? Is there, do you feel like your student got ahead this summer? Is that also a question that's asked?
Sure. We did not ask a question of that, again, because the main focus of ESY is to prevent substantial regression, so we focused on that regression piece.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I just want to make sure Willow, who I neglected to mention at the very beginning of the meeting, is joining us virtually tonight. I want to make sure, Willow, if you have any questions, if you want to raise your hand or...
Thanks, Holly, and thanks Kathy and Sarah. I don't think I have any questions. I just wanted to say that I appreciate that you heard sort of the feedback about ESY and the desire to have some concrete sort of survey suggestions and to take that feedback back for your planning for this coming year, and it really seems like you did that, and it's a great program. I think that the enhanced communication will go a long way for families, and I appreciate you reaching out and listening to those parents.
Thanks, Willow. Bob, did you have?
Sarah, this is another question on the parent feedback about regression. If I understood your presentation correctly, there was a discrepancy between the feedback and the testing that you did, I think, you know, in the structured school setting. How was the parent feedback measured?
So it's the, yeah, good question, because that is something that I noticed as well. So the parent, when the parent feedback may or may not be based on the data that was collected by teachers during the course of the summer. So there is definitely a discrepancy between what the parent feedback is saying about that regression piece and what our teachers are collecting in the data about the regression piece.
And so is that feedback from the parents just purely their observation?
I can't speak to that, yeah.
But can I just add that, I think, to your point about improved communication, if there is more regular communication, hopefully there would be not that disparity between what the parents perceive is their regression versus what the data is showing. Correct?
Yeah, definitely.
Meredith, did you have a question?
Just, yeah, on that same topic, was the survey anonymous, or could you, if a parent reported that they felt like there was regression, could you look at that child's data?
Yeah, so the survey was not anonymous.
Okay. And you did so?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. And then my only other question was, last year when we were discussing the three-hour day, we indicated that, you know, staffing was a real concern, whether or not we could adequately staff the four-hour day. What are we doing now to ensure that we will be able to staff the four-hour day?
Sure, so that's why I did send a survey to our staff who worked the last two summers for us. As I mentioned, most have indicated that this shift will not be a changing factor. I could say anecdotally, I mean, I can't, a person can tell me today, "I might come back next summer, I will come back next summer," or "I won't come back next summer," and change their mind between now and next summer. Anecdotally, I think what will end up happening is we will be capturing more non-Bethlehem staff next summer.
Okay. Christine, did you have a question?
Just a couple things, I think it goes to what Jody was saying. So on the one slide, right there, that slide, 22% were no, did you receive your monitoring. So do you believe that the correlation for those 20, because that's 20 students, or well, it's not 20%, because it's of the 27.
Right, right.
So it's a small number.
It is a small number, and what I did specifically hear from a couple of the families who said no to that question was, "Oops, I got it in the mail a couple days later."
Okay. And the only other real question I have, and thank you for putting the presentation together and increasing the time by an hour for, I think it was like 40 to 50 students, I think it will affect...
20 to 25.
Only 20 to 25?
Intensive Skills will be 20 to 25, Specialized Instruction will be about 40 students. So there's two groups of students that will be impacted by an increase in programming.
Okay. And then some of them are just coming for services, and the Rise students, I can see why that wouldn't make a difference in that, those programs.
The Rise students are increasing, though.
The what?
The Rise students are increasing.
Oh, they are, okay.
Yeah.
So I guess the question I had, because we have a low number of respondents, and I think we talked about it last year at the Board meeting, to maybe reach out via phone to follow up, to get a higher response in regards to the survey, and specifically, I think we were talking about the impact, just for informational purposes, on whether or not the length of the program for the other students that wouldn't get that extra hour would impact whether or not they could participate in the program.
So if we go, I don't know, Brittany, what slide it is exactly, but it's the first slide about the families who decline, and that was where I spoke about those four main reasons. Families choose tutoring, families would prefer to go and have flexibility for vacation, families prefer to send their kids to camp, and some families are preferring downtime for their students. Even though the respondents were only a handful of respondents on that, in conferring with, you know, the CSE chairs, we can speak confidently that those are the reasons families are declining, that it's independent of the length of time of the program for the families who are declining. So that was why I included that next slide that talked about the students by program, because within those subsets, we also have a greater understanding of the why. And when you get into especially those Rise students, there are some very specific reasons that would apply to that group of students, like work, for example.
Is it a question that you could ask during IEP meetings in the spring when they're done, because you're going to know the students that you'll be asking?
They do.
We do.
When the parents decline, it's usually them.
Yep. That's where, that's why we can say that with confidence, because we know why our families are declining. And I think I also mentioned, we, you know, some of the families represented up here, some of the students represented up here, they decline every year. The students are eligible every single year, and the families at the table tell us every single year, "No, thank you, we're going to choose camp, or we're going to choose tutoring, or we're going to choose vacation."
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you could, if you could hold, we have, we'll have a chance for public comment on Our second presentation tonight is just an update on our capital bond project.
So lessons learned from the last Board meeting, I brought my papers out.
Reinforce it.
Yes, that'll work. So, good evening, everybody. Tonight is a follow-up presentation to the meeting we had on September 7th. I'll summarize the bond project status and the proposed action plan needed in preparation for bidding the project here in the fall. in preparation for bidding the project here in the fall. So this is our original construction timeline. It's contingent on the state education department's review and approval of documents that will be submitted, that we submitted on August 9th of 2022. The good news is, we currently have confirmation that our architectural document review is in progress, and our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing document review is to follow. So that puts us, hopefully, on track. Just a quick recap of the budget that we discussed last time. The breakdown of the three components has been updated since the last presentation, based on recent analysis of the project team, mainly our construction manager, Turner Construction. The construction budget is valued at $32,500, correction, $32,554,905. That is the target amount of our actual construction. Okay, that is the work that we can do, that does not include the design fees, the administrative fees, legal fees, et cetera. Our goal is to maximize the amount of work that we have, the amount of work in an awardable project when these bids are received here in the fall. In addition to the base bids, we'll have four alternate bids totaling approximately $1.1 million built into the project. And as you recall, an alternate is where the project, or that portion of the project is designed, and highlighted in the project documents, so that the bidders can give us a price on that. If our bids come in favorable, the Board of Education may opt to include that into our project. Those four, excuse me, the, the four alternates are, the middle school dust collection system valued at $399,000, hemogrel casework in some of the classrooms valued at $385,000, the high school G-100, which is our music practice area, air conditioning valued at $97,584, and the Glenmont fire alarm replacement valued at $250,000. Please note that the contingency amount of $2,209,023 represents approximately 7.5% of the construction budget, which is an industry standard that is used, and it's an amount that the team feels comfortable having for unforeseen or unknowns as we get into construction. For example, finding a pipe in the wall that was covered with asbestos that we were unaware of pre-construction. All right, as you recall, at the September 7th Board of Education meeting, we discussed the industry concerns that we're faced with, and the budget and schedule associated with the 160, correction, 176 original elements of the project. The current situation has been exacerbated by the pandemic and residual effects. Our construction manager completes very detailed cost estimates to help us assess the project costs when we go out to bid. Two of these estimates have been completed, one in July on the 20th, and one in September on the 23rd. Both have resulted in findings that we are approximately 20% over budget, or approximately $10 million. The team has held many meetings, obviously, to determine how we are going to bring this project to within budget. All right, so the way we were going to do that, we first looked at value engineering, all right, and those are items that we would use to reduce costs, but do not have impact on the project element. An example, that would be, you know, changing concrete brick to a block, or changing a light fixture to a less expensive light fixture. So we would value engineer something to reduce its construction cost. The construction schedule is, is fall of 2024 for completion. For a project this size, it's very aggressive. Over the past few weeks, we've spent a lot of time analyzing how we can complete the construction for all of our elements, and our goal was to minimize disruption to each school's program. The disruption of the program with our aggressive schedule was determined to be extensive, and we don't really have a choice to fit this in within two years, two construction years. Some elements, although not glamorous, had to remain in the project, for example boilers, fire alarms, upgrades, or special funding sources like the American Rescue Plan projects. We, we have to keep those in because that's a source of outside funding. Our reduction process also had us re-inspect and evaluate some of our, of our project elements. We determined that their condition was satisfactory to either partially reduce or eliminate the scope in its entirety. Some elements were identified to be able to be completed by the operations and maintenance department in future years, or, and as operating budget allows. So the team, together, we created a reductions list, which I will summarize in a, in a future slide. Our assessment and prioritization was based on the following criteria. Elements that O and M can complete, lower priority or aesthetic elements, or other maintenance reasons that we could reduce. Scope that was not included in the original project, and our building envelope. Our list total, our recommended reductions list is approximately $10 million, which would cancel out our deficit. All right, so as you can see, the, I'm having a hard time seeing, the lower priority, let me back up. The projects that O and M complete of the $10 million would be $120,000. Lower priority aesthetic or other maintenance reasons were $2 million in reduction. Of that, site was $304,000, flooring and other renovations was $788,000, roofing was $193,000, and mechanical, electrical, plumbing was $763,000. The lower priority aesthetic and other maintenance reason, reasons that were value engineered, were value engineered at a total of $1.9 million, with $1.5 million in site, $320,000 in flooring and other renovations, and mechanical, electrical, and plumbing reduction of $6,700. It also includes scope that was not included in the original project that was put out to the public and approved by the public at the vote. That scope, it was in the amount of $1,053,018. And then additionally, we had our building envelope, roofing, and scope reduction of $5 million. So there were three, those three substantials that were not included in the original were high school courtyard improvements valued at $290, $297,000, a high school veterans' flag memorial valued at $113,000, and a middle school digital classroom improvement at $644,000. The roofs account for $4.8 million, while masonry reporting accounts for the balance on the envelope of our building. One thing that I wanted to add here is the only added scope that wasn't approved by the public or post-referendum was the high school main distribution frame, or our main server room air conditioning replacement. And that is because we did apply for a capital outlay project that we were not eligible for due to cost. And that was in the amount of $145,000 that was included in the project. And that is a, a high priority to maintain our main distribution frame. Okay, now we can go to the next slide. So we, we do have some additional considerations that if our bids come in, and we are approved to proceed with our scope reductions, and we do go out to bid and receive unfavorable bids, that we may have to recommend more reductions. And we would come up with that list and provide it to the Board of Education for review and approval. The worst case, as, as the team discussed, is that we may have a construction delay, because right now, our, the conditions in the field or in the capital region are not favorable for construction. So in other words, everything costs way more than it should. All right, and if we were to opt to delay, it, conditions may get better, and, and things can level out, and we can actually do more construction for the same value of that $32 million. The, the list will be presented after the bids. If, if we have to do the worst case, the list would be presented to the board after the bids were received and vetted. In conclusion, the, the reduction solution presented tonight was a long process and involved many parties and many difficult decisions. The unexpected impacts to the construction cost from the economy and COVID has been significant. The team, to my left here, is confident that the district will have an awardable project when we do go out to bid. And the project team is seeking the board's concurrence to proceed with these recommendations, so that the project can be designed and appropriately documented over the next few weeks prior to going out to bid, once S E D approval is received. And that would be what we would call our construction drawings for bid. So at this point, are there any questions?
So the, the bids that we're going to be looking for are going to be on the project with these reductions that you're recommending, that you, that sort of this, the projects O and M can complete, and the lower priority, and the, that list of four?
That is correct.
Okay, is it possible for us to get a more detailed list of what those mean? I think, I mean, you mentioned, I think, for the, the building, oh, Judy's got it. Thank you. Just hot off the presses.
So to clarify Holly's clarifying question, the bid will go out absent these $10 million worth of?
That's our recommendation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then, would you talk a little bit? I know you did a lot of value engineering relative to the question on the tennis courts, and you spent a lot of time.
Sure, so the tennis courts at the middle school, we have a total of eight there. There's six that are in a group, and then there's a separate two. The tennis courts are used by P E, the community, and practice for some of our JV, and on occasion, maybe the varsity teams. Okay, so our original five-year plan that was updated in 2020 showed that we were going to replace, or correction, resurface the tennis courts and replace the fence. All right, and that value back then, when we did this, was estimated at $478,670. Okay, and that was a recoding, not a replacement or a full depth. Okay, so we carried that forward as a recommendation from the five-year plan, and in the 2021 bond, we were going to do the same. Okay, as we got into our design development, our site architect came in, and there was some question, can we do what's considered a full-depth replacement, and basically replace everything in its entirety for those six tennis courts? That would have excluded the additional two. All right, so in the 21 bond, it was designed, as requested, to have a, it's not truly full depth because we were going to leave the substrate or the sub-base below. We were going to take the asphalt off, we, we were going to remove the crown in the asphalt that used to be the way they built them. And we were going to add drainage to one side of the tennis courts, because now, instead of a crown and water running off both sides, it would want to run in one direction, and we didn't want ponding. All right, it would have included replacing the fencing, wind screens, and new equipment. So the, and, and just as I did the research on this, our last reco was during the 2013 capital bond project. In, in looking at it, a typical life cycle is plus or minus 15 years. It depends on which expert you ask. And a reco is typically required every five to seven years in the Northeast. All right, so once we got our schematic design estimate, the estimate from back in 2020, I'll just round up to $500,000, turned into $1.1 million in today's times. So we were not expecting basically double the cost for six tennis courts. So what the team did is, we had our geotechnical experts come in, take core samples, and analyze the core samples of what our existing six tennis courts are made of. Okay, and it was determined that a full-depth replacement is not necessary because structurally, they are sound, although there's cracks, which is typical in the Northeast. And just as a side note, those, this geotechnical testing is the same that we use for doing our parking lots. An example would be the high school parking lot out front. There are areas that we need to, based on our core sampling, and I think folks will remember there was a guy out there drilling holes in our parking lot, when we already have enough. But we take those samples and we find out what the sub-base is, because we could put asphalt new on, and if the sub-base is not sound, it will fail. So we did this with the tennis courts, okay? Additionally, back in 20, if we were to do the fence, it would have disrupted the actual surface, so it would have, it would have been cause for new asphalt as well. So after consultation with the architect, the site engineer, and the site designer, our geotechnical consultant, Craftco, who used to be Copeland, who was the folks here in the Northeast, basically the go-to folks that do recoding of tracks and tennis courts, and in consultation with the athletic director, he got feedback from his coaches, his staff. We recommended that we value engineer this. And what we would consider value engineering is doing a crack fill, not the usual crack fill like we did the last time at the high school, but they use a flexible fabric such that the cracks do not, don't open up as far, and, and that the crack fill material doesn't leave and fall down in the crack. Okay, additionally, the courts would be washed and then recoded with brand-new colors, now that we, we've looked at this, and restriped, okay? So that would basically preserve the courts and make them look like new, with the exception of the fence. So I, I built a little bit of a timeline. In July, we started looking at the high school tennis courts, July of '22, and we were notified that there were some issues with disrepair with some of the equipment, and notified that some of the cracks that were repaired five years ago are reappearing. So we kind of started looking at that, we made the immediate repairs, and then, most recently, in the fall, we took a second look when we started value, value engineering the middle school, and said, okay, if we're going to be able to, to reco and repair the middle school, should we include repair and reco of the high school as well? Okay, because we do have a need, that's where our competitive sports play is. Additionally, we looked at, can we do the two separate courts over at the middle school, or the two-pack, as I call them? So the eight courts over at the middle school, and the 10 courts at the high school, if we did a crack fill and repair, we wash, we reco with, with new colors and restripe. There's some caveats with that, the, the two-pack at the middle school, P E has requested pickleball lines, and we've consulted with everyone, so that they don't have to lay them out with tape, et cetera. So in doing that value engineering, and, and bringing in, and getting an actual bid from a cooperative purchase, we could do all 18 tennis courts, so the sixth, correction, the eight at the high, middle school, and the 10 at the high school for $465,765, and that's a hard number from them. And again, they would all look brand-new, with the exception of the fence at the middle school.
Do you want questions on this, at this point, or do you want to wait till the end?
I was just going to finish my blurb, if, if I may, so. So what, again, once we determined that, we, we, the high school was not included in our, our original referendum request. that, we, we, the high school was not included in our, our original referendum request. Okay? But knowing that we do have this and we are in the, in the bond, excuse me, the pre-bid, we decided that it would be a good idea to repair the high school as well. All right? So, so that's, that's what I had on, on the, on high school and middle school tennis courts.
I have a question on the, on the roofs?
Yes, sir.
The ones that we're talking, proposing to eliminate, what do you see as being the useful life of them going forward if we wait on those?
Okay. So, again, part of value engineering, I'm going to use the middle school as an example. The majority of our roofs that haven't been replaced or repaired in the, the last two bond projects are nearing their end of warranty period. Okay? So, we felt that let's get our warranty so that we don't run into a problem. We sat down and went over every roof that was proposed and determined, are they tight? Are we experiencing any issues? And at the middle school, there was a substantial roof replacement. Okay? What we did determine is, we have two roofs. It's actually labeled as four, but it's two sections of roof, one being the cafeteria and one being the original building's roof, the tall, tall section. We determined that we could value engineer and do those two roofs because those are actually required and have caused issues in the past five years. So, we removed the new addition roof and a roof over the library because they're relatively new and we're not experiencing any problems. And we felt that that was a good item that we could substantially reduce that $10 million deficit.
Thank you.
So, following up, what's the life expectancy for those roofs that are removed, that have been, that are proposed for removal?
Well, depending on the maintenance and, and we do our due diligence with maintenance, a typical roof is 30 years. Okay? Most of our warranties were either 15-year or 25-year. The proposed new roofs, moving forward, will always be a 30-year warranty. But these roofs, as long as they're maintained, and we do have a roofing company that is at our beck and call. When we do experience a problem, we're on top of it. It's when a roof gets neglected and there's a hole and nobody does anything about it and the underlying insulation fails or gets saturated with water, that's when we experience major problems. The Elsmere's roofs was another that we did substantial scope reduction.
So, and so again, so we're staying within that 30-year, what I'm just asking is like, if we, if the ones that we choose not to do here, that you're advising that we not do, what are we looking at for, for lifespan? How much longer are they in warranty?
Well, again, they're nearing their warranty. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. But, but, based on us doing smaller capital projects, they'd be included in the next. And we felt that we would be okay by delaying these until our next capital. And those would become high priority on the next capital project.
Okay, thank you.
Because they would certainly be due.
Right.
And pass their useful life.
Any other questions from you guys? Oh, I just wanted, I'm just going to double check with Willow. I know you have questions. Willow, did you have any questions?
I don't.
I think she's saying no?
Okay.
So, and do you want to go first?
Thanks for your presentation, Nick. I just had a quick question on the, you had said that the, the project's plans or the review was in progress?
Yes.
Is there any kind of standard timeframe that that suggests?
Well, we went out and it's 12 to 14 right now. We're, yeah, if I may, I'll, I'll turn it over to Drew. He, he, this is our principal architect from Ashley McGraw, and I failed to do introductions because I was so excited to start talking. So, I'll do that now. So, this is Drew Jones.
Good evening.
Mike Collins from Turner Construction, our construction management team, and Brian Bodner, he's the assistant superintendent of buildings.
So, SED can be fickle, for lack of a better term. Their website will say 12 to 14 weeks. We tend to budget three to four months, just to be safe. One thing that this project has going for it is the federal funding sources that we talked about. Those projects get into a faster pipeline at SED because there's a funding window that needs to be met for those funds to be spent and reimbursed. So, we're in a good spot with SED. Both our architecture and our engineering are under review at the same time. And I've had regular contact with our architectural reviewer and he likes our documents. He doesn't see a lot of showstoppers there. Showstoppers being something that we would have to go back and revise a significant portion of our documents to meet their needs. So, I, I feel confident that our timeline is feasible. But knowing that, I still haven't gotten my comments back from SED for either component. So, I'm looking into the crystal ball and I'm seeing something worthwhile. But until they land, we're at that win.
And are there any other objective sort of flags along the way that would indicate to you where it was in the, the review process?
The only thing I know is that it's definitely in review. And I've talked to the architectural reviewer and he's generally favorable with our documents. I've not talked to engineering. I know engineering is in review. I also know that we're also under project management review. There's kind of, there's three phases of this and they used to run end, end, end. And I think with the expedited review for these federally funded projects, they do them all at once. And I know that they're hiring more staff at Triad to do it all more at once. So, we're getting project manager comments as well as engineering comments and architecture comments, kind of concurrently, rather than one by one by one. So, I, I s, I look into that and I see a whole full situation for us collectively. But again, until I have those comments, it's a little, I, it's a little bit of a guess, for sure.
Thank you.
So, I have a lot of questions. So, I guess we'll start with the high school courts.
I'm sorry?
I have a lot of questions and I figured we'd start with the high school courts.
Sure.
So, they were redone, completely renovated in 2014. So, we're eight years out in 2022. And the rule usually is five to seven years for resurfacing. My first question is, why didn't we know that it needed to be resurfaced until after we had the scope items for this current bond? Because they're at a point where it needs to be resurfaced to play.
And you're referring to the high school courts?
I'm referring to the high school courts.
Okay. So, the high school courts, maybe I misspoke, but we have cracks. It doesn't have to be resurfaced right now. However, we chose that if we do this crack repair, we would take advantage of having the contractor onsite, pressure wash, resurface, and then also speaking with the coaches. They want to change to a US Open color format. So, we would take that opportunity while we had that contractor here. We could certainly repair the cracks, as we did in 2018, and, and repaint ju, paint just the areas that we corrected. Okay? But we, we wanted to go a little further and do the whole thing over.
Because I, I think, Len, you spoke with the coaches about patchwork on, on the high school court. And they indicated that would make it worse to actually do the patchwork. They would need a resurface. That was.
Can you go, Len? Len, would you mind going to the microphone? I'm sorry.
And Len Keys, our athletic director.
So, the, the patchwork, I think that's, that coaches were referring to was what we did in 2018, where it was a very different kind of crack repair, where it's literally like painted. The, the difference, and correct me if I'm wrong, the difference between the 2018 and what we're talking about now is, the 2018 is simply a patch. We get wet, you know, rain, precipitation, cold, hot, and it cracks, just like sidewalks do.
Right.
This type of, of patchwork, and actually Coach Begley, Coach George, and Mr. Rinsoni and myself were out there for a good amount of time last week together. This, as I understand it, would be injected into, this fabric would be injected into the crack and actually pulls the crack together. Right now, fortunately, we don't have a disparity in the grading, right, so to speak?
Correct.
So, it's, so if we can pull it together, right, with this, you know, higher-level patch crack repair, then we, we resurface it, that will all seal together. What's nice about that is we're actually having the original court, you know, together. And then, of course, recoated, restripped, et cetera.
So, you are planning on resurfacing the high school with this plan?
Yes, recoding. And again, I know it's a semantic. I just wanted to make sure that clear. Recoding is basically repainting. It's a very, I don't know how many mils thick it is, but just like a, a running track, it's the coating on top of the asphalt.
And that's what's required every five to seven years to maintain it?
It's recommended every five to seven, correct?
Okay. So, that's when you're saying resurfacing every five to seven, you're referring to the recoding?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I just want to expound on something that Len said. So, one of the concerns that one of the coaches had is they had a piece of material and they asked me, what is this? Is this wood is between the paint, I'll call it the coating, but the paint, the color, and the asphalt, which is your substrate? And I looked at it and I, I kind of was like, where did you get that? Because it's not. Okay? What that was, and as Len referred, when they did our temporary patch or crack repairs, it's basically, it's, it's a thickness, like an eighth inch thick, that they inject just the acrylic in there and then they, they do what's called filter refusal. And it kind of spread out over top. And whoever the contractor was kind of just took a, a paintbrush and smeared it in. And that is what cracked off. The difference between what we're proposing with the recoding after the crack repair, it's not going to be on top of the coating. It will be one level surface. So, basically, once we're done, you would never know that the crack is there. The cracks after repair in 2018, you could see the line because we didn't repaint the entire tennis court and we didn't use the higher-level fabric and acrylic crack sealant.
So, is recoding putting another layer of asphalt on the top?
No, no. No, recoding is the paint, the non-skin paint.
When do you do another layer of asphalt?
I'm sorry?
Do you ever do another layer of asphalt?
Again, as I said earlier, it's, it's really up to what the tennis court looks like. Okay? And I'll, I'll give you an example. If we were to, if we said, you know what? We're just going to do another lay of a, of asphalt over our high school tennis courts, the same cracks are going to appear.
Correct.
Because we live in the Northeast and we, you know, it's, it's a, a challenge, even sidewalks, as we all know. So, unless we had a structural issue, typically, we do not have to take the asphalt down and re-asphalt a tennis court.
So, the coaches indicate the repairs at the high school are imperative because that's where they play all their matches. And right now, because the middle school courts are pretty much unplayable for their sports matches, they do all of their practices at the high school and they rotate, obviously, what schools they play at. So, I just want, I just want to make sure that we're very clear that we have like 120 students who play JV and varsity between girls and boys. And this summer, we had over 200 participants in the summer youth program, anywhere ranging from K through 12, playing on the high school court. So, they are getting used and we should be maintaining them on a regular schedule. Going to the middle school courts, when we brought this up for items in the bond, the quote came back at 864,000. It wasn't at half a million and went up over double. We were at 864 when we came back with the pricing in the spring. So, I just want to make sure that we're aware that it's like a $200,000 discrepancy. But the issue with the middle school that I see is that we didn't rebuild the courts in 2014. We haven't resurfaced them. We haven't repaired them. The cracks are large. There's roots growing in them and there's pitching at the net. So, I'm pretty certain that if we do this valued engineering, within a year or two, they will be unplayable. Again, they haven't been used by the sports teams in five years because they're unplayable, because they're uneven, which is very different than a parking lot where you can pave over and have uneven spots. You can't have that in tennis playing. It just does not make sense. And what I'm seeing or what I'm hearing is two years from now, this is a quick fix, this is valued engineering, and we're going to be, be replacing them completely in two years. And right now, we have two sports teams, two, section two championship sports teams, playing on one set of courts because we didn't maintain them for eight years and we haven't done our due diligence with our facilities. And I'm not blaming you, Nick. I think you're doing a fantastic job and you work very hard. So, I want to make sure I'm very clear on that.
I would, I would just like to let you know, though. So, we had substantial cracks in 2018 in our high school tennis courts. That crack repair, which is not as extensive and it was, did not include a recoat, lasted five years.
But there's pitching and the, the issue is, what is the underlying issue in the structure of the tennis courts that's causing the pitching? How, how are you evening out the courts? And also, they, you, the fence right now, where it's at, balls roll under it. If, if the fence isn't repaired, you can't even play on the courts because the balls go right under it. So, and I play tennis. So, and I use those courts because they're the only coast, courts available.
So, so let me understand what you mean by pitching because I think what I'm hearing is, back in the day, when they used to build tennis courts, they crowned them, just like a football field. Okay? So, that, I think that's what you're referring to is pitching?
Well, they're higher at the net, yes. But there are other root causes, I should say, as to the structure. And, and what I'm asking is, did we have like tennis engineers come out, look at the substructure, look at the sub-base, and they think that that could be totally resurfaced?
Recoding.
And not have to be replaced in two years? Because in 2014, that was not, you know, it was resurfaced. It wasn't rebuilt.
Correct. And yes, as I had spoke to, we used all of our consultants, our architect, site engineers, the geotechnical reports and geotechnical consultants. We used Craftco. The tennis court installing company came out and recommended, yeah, you're okay, just like the high school. And, you know, we took that to heart and said, okay, we would like to take advantage or recommend taking advantage of doing 18 courts versus six. So, we're going to preserve and make our 18 courts better for less than half of what it would take to fix six courts.
I'm not arguing the cost savings. I'm arguing that we resurfaced them in 2014 and they were unusable in 2016. So, nothing about this engineering seems to make sense to me that we're going to get more than two years out of them without having to sink a large quantity of money in there. And that's okay. If you want to say it's like a temporary fix until we can rebuild them. But what makes it different from 2014 that they're going to be usable for five years when they weren't usable for two?
Okay. So, and, and I'm hearing what you're saying. I guess our experts' recommendations and evaluation, at no time did they tell me that they weren't unusable or unplayable. So, I'm, I'm not sure where that came from. So, we're going by the recommendations and evaluations and the data that we have from geotechnical reports, et cetera, that says that our tennis courts are structurally sound. And if we were to do this crack repair, we'll get the five to seven, just like we do at the high school.
I'm just going to put on the record, I think if you repair them and resurface them, in two years, you will have a bond issue with the same amount of money and we just spent another 250, 300,000 of the taxpayer money and we didn't do what we should have done.
I, I mean, I appreciate the concern. I have to rely on the data that's provided and our experts. Okay?
Can we get, can they speak to this at some point? Like, what I don't understand is, I would love to ask an engineer the question, like, why were they not really usable after two years with significant cracks, rooting, and uneven courts? And now they think that they would be okay. If we did the same.
Because we're repairing them. Where, the cracks will be gone.
But they were repaired in 2014 and they stopped using them in 2016.
Okay. And we can certainly get in contact. I don't know that, I, I can't call them right now.
No, I, but we've done this before. That's all I'm saying. We've done this before with other items, facilities, sports facilities, where we think we're doing the right thing and then we have to do it again. This won't, won't be the first bond issue.
Is it possible that the repair done in '14 is not the exact type? Because obviously, things change. Technology changes, resources change, as far as, you know what I'm saying?
Technology, sure.
It may not be the exact same as '14. I'll be, I'll be honest, the high school courts have rapidly become a major issue and I do. and I do know that in our current project scope, there is nothing for high school as it currently stands.
Yes.
Which is a huge concern for me.
Yes.
We use both courts, both middle school and high school for physical education. And while, yes, I would agree, I would not want a varsity tennis match at middle school, we do practice there. They are used. So they are used. We frequently have to blow up the law because of all the tree line that drops, you know, dropping, you know, we play there.
I do, and that's why I know that they're practicing, they're practicing 2:30 to 5:30 at the high school and 5:30 to 7:30, back to back, both teams, because they don't use the middle school. And Aiden and Kyle both play tennis and I know when they stopped using the court.
I can also tell you, I get requests constantly to have facilities blow off the courts when JV practice. So it's not always at the high school.
And just to, I mean, just to make it clear, I mean, what I'm hearing you saying, Nick, is that the kind of repair that the engineers are proposing for all 18 courts is a different kind of repair because of this fabric that's gonna go in than the, it's different from just what's happened in the past.
Correct. And I'll give you an example. When we did it in 2018, it was unexpected. It wasn't budgeted for. And that was a acrylic fill and make it the same color only. We're talking routing it out. You know, it's not just you walk up and dump stuff in it. We're routing it out and making sure that we have good bond. We put the fabric in that does move. It would be the same as kinda putting a vinyl or linoleum over a floor versus a vinyl tile that could crack. It's flexible. It moves. One of the good things that we did determine, and we were very happy, is that, as Len said, we do not have elevational changes in the cracks. We have separation. Okay, that's what makes these courts salvageable.
Except with the pitch, the old pitch, that was, if that was old pitch and not structural issues.
Christine, I'm just gonna have you pause for just a second. I'm noticing that it's nine o'clock. We need to take a, we need to take a short minute just to let our PIG students go home. If you guys should come up and sign out and if you need a signature on your agenda or on your document.
Oh, I'm not done.
What?
I'm not done.
Oh, I know you're not done. I'm just making sure everybody's good. All right, I think Christine had another question.
Well, not even another question, more like statements, and Len's aware of this, is that, you know, we're looking to get middle school modified tennis or even intermurals going. And again, I don't want to see us put money into courts where we're gonna, two years from now, have to be having a different conversation. So I'm gonna ask you and your engineers, if you had to make a million dollar bet that in two years, because cracks always resurface and they're large and the court's uneven, would you make that bet that you're not gonna have to replace those courts in two years? And you don't have to answer that if you don't want to, but...
Well, I'm not sure where "two years" came from, because again, as I said, we did it in 18 and they lasted five. So I could-
At the high school, at the middle school, the last time those courts were resurfaced were 2014. They haven't been done in eight years.
I agree. And what's wrong with the middle school is there's cracks. And we're gonna do the same thing to the middle school that we're doing at the high school.
The cracks at the middle school are much different than the cracks at the high school. The cracks at the middle school have gone because we didn't maintain it, we didn't resurface it, we didn't do all the right things. The ground shifts, the soil underneath it, there's pitching issues. In the condition that they're in, those cracks are coming back.
I agree, in probably five years, just like they did at the high school.
And how are you gonna fix the pitching problem at the net that affects how they could play matches?
Again, we aren't playing competitive sports on there. I don't foresee us doing that based on the research that we've done in the very near future.
What research? On playing var- why wouldn't we use the courts for sports, for JV if we're having them redone?
You're right. In the next two to three years, we will have modified tennis and they will be able to play there.
Why would you not have JV play there if we redid the courts?
I'm talking about matches.
I'm talking matches. Why would we not use it for matches if we did it the right way?
We can, but the way the suburban council's schedule works is it's opposite varsity. So we're not gonna send the JV to the middle school to play when the high school courts are open.
Correct.
That's why, that's why I'm saying-
Right, because they're there, obviously. But if we're doing it, why wouldn't we want to make it so that we could have matches there?
Yeah, I agree.
If we needed to, or-
What we probably have there in JV practice when we need to.
But with pitch problems, that would be a problem.
Well, I'm not a tennis player, but I would have to ask. That's how they were built and that's how they were played for the last, I don't know how many years, since they were installed. I haven't had anybody tell me that they're not playable because of the pitch or the crown. I won't call it pitch, I'll call it the crown.
I think you could ask any one of the coaches and they would tell you those are not playable for any type of match play. And I did ask that question, so I-
Well, they'd have practice there. They absolutely practiced there, absolutely. This year, last year, the year before. I mean, I was just going through the old email, where we're frequently blowing the courts off for practice in the afternoon. Would I play a varsity match there? No. If I, I would not, right now, play a varsity match there.
It just sounds like-
Christine, I don't think that that's the standard, though. Like, we don't play our varsity soccer games at the middle school. You know, like, we recognize that, that the modified or JV teams do play at fields that are-
They used to play regularly there.
That's their standard. I just think that we're hearing from our experts who're saying that this is a fix that will work and that will last. It's not gonna be perfect, but we don't have the money to be perfect right now. And this is something that is more than just a Band-Aid. This is a real different fix that they are proposing. And I think it's, we should be going, moving forward with this because we don't have the option of doing a huge re, complete resurface or re-
Build.
A complete rebuild of the middle school tennis courts. That's not an option. This is the best option. Our engineers are telling us that this is better than what they did two years ago. It's gonna last. I think we just need to accept what the engineers are telling us and move forward with it.
And it gives us the bonus of doing work at the high school-
Thank you, correct.
-as opposed to only at the middle school.
Right.
No, I understand the high school has to get done and that wasn't part of the scope and I understand things need to change in order to accommodate that. What I'm saying is, I'm not sure what we're proposing at the middle school because they did use to play regularly at the middle school for JV. They would bus over there every day and they stopped doing that because of the condition of the court some-
They actually stopped doing that because the suburban council's schedule model changed. That's actually the real reason why it originally stopped. Again, I don't disagree with you. I would not want currently to have matches there. But the reason they stopped is because the schedule model changed. So now it's alternating sites for varsity and JV. So obviously, the courts at the high school with the beautiful windscreen and it's great, obviously, you know, it's a great setup. Obviously, if JV can use those courts and varsity's away, that's where they're gonna play. We're not gonna bus to the middle school.
And I don't think that fence is, I think you're gonna have to really look at the fencing and potential for replacing that in order to use the courts. I mean, that's the other issue, is that the fence doesn't align with the courts and Len's-
Kathy is something that I'm just gonna-
I've got a question. I've got just two more questions that are not tennis related. But just to, just to understand, because Christine, I hear, I hear your concerns and I hear, I hear what's being presented and I hear the deficit that, or the overage that we're up against and that we need to cut. If this is not your preferred solution, or if you want to block adoption of the proposal, is there something else to consider? Is there, I guess, you know, just, what is the, what is another way around this? Are you proposing that we put the funding back in and remove something else that's currently in to meet that $10 million spread?
Yes, I think the number of students who use the courts, the community, I think it's a facility that really needs to be enhanced to a degree where it doesn't have to be repaired again in two years. And again, I'm going to the fact that we did not maintain the courts for, since 2014. It's not the same as the high school. You keep saying since 2018.
Hold on a second, I'm processing, I'm processing.
So I'd like them to go back and look at other items to remove from the scope versus replacing the courts at the middle school because of the need for it, the use of it, and to do it right the first time.
So then the question before the board at this point is either to accept a proposal that has been made or to reject a proposal and ask for an alternate proposal. Is that correct, as far as our choice points are concerned?
I would say yes.
So then can we have a vote on that?
I think the other thing is, like, I understand, Christine, that tennis courts are clearly your high priority. I think there's a lot of, I think a lot of people would argue, you know, the field hockey bleacher pads, the drainage at the fields, I mean, you've got a million soccer players and football players. Like, I mean, I think it's all, I think it's almost in a discussion for something else. I just, I feel like it's, I feel like it's just a little too personal because I think a lot of people have other priorities that would, you know, security and life. There's a lot of things that I think are, that were already taken out that I think needs to be considered. You know, we just did a presentation about the security with our infrastructure and the network. Like, I mean, I just, I think-
So what I want to say about that-
It really comes down to our personal priorities and I think as a whole, we need to have a discussion on priorities, not on what was done wrong in the past. And again, I think if we have one great high school court, I mean, that's better than most of these other schools that can't even pass a budget. So I just, I feel like we can't necessarily have it all at the time right now when, you know, 20% increase in budget is massive and it's not, it's not getting any better. Recession's coming. I mean, reality is, it's reality, so.
So I want to counter that just a little bit, just, first of all, just because I play tennis or I had kids that played tennis, discrediting it by making it personal is not really, I don't think appropriate. I think I'm looking at it from making sure we do it right from the first time because I've been on the board for nine years and I've seen many projects have to be redone because we didn't scope it out properly or the engineering was wrong and that happens. And I play tennis and I'm on those courts and I can see the issues, which are vastly different than the high school. So what I'm saying is, before we spend that money to temporarily fix it, really make sure that the engineers are on target with that. I understand that you've talked to the engineers, but the courts have not been updated in eight years, which is different.
And as a board, we have heard that very clearly. How do we, this is not going to solve anything.
So what I have heard is that we do not have the money to do everything that we initially wanted to do.
Correct.
We have to make cuts to the original project. We have a proposal that has been presented. It's not something that we need to do a formal vote on. But the question is really whether anybody, I mean, obviously, Christine, you do not agree with the proposal as it has been presented, but I'm not hearing-
But it's either would you block it or do we send this back?
I would like to send it back because I don't see us cutting in other areas. I don't see us cutting any of the build in the auditorium or other areas. To me, when I look at this, we've neglected the tennis team for amount of time that we didn't know that the resurfacing needed to be done at the high school and we didn't maintain our courts at the middle school for- And we didn't maintain our courts at the middle school for eight years and there are significant issues with it. We put it in the bond, but no other area, there are some mechanical plumbing, electrical being looked at, but there, the other big projects aren't being looked at. And it has nothing to do with it being personal because I play tennis. I'm just.
We've got 127 down in this field drainage. I mean, that, those fields, so I think there are.
The question at this point, because I feel like now we're starting to go around in a circle, is, is that, the question is whether anybody else concurs that it should go back and be revisited.
Holly, we have a question.
Could I just add a comment on that? The process, we spent a lot of time talking to Nick and hearing about how do you make these decisions? And Nick really just touched on the tip of the iceberg tonight when he talked about how they're prioritizing this. The number of man-hours that the entire OACM team has spent trying to solve this very unprecedented problem. You know, coming off of COVID and this cost escalation, we've got people who have been in this construction industry for decades for their whole careers who have never seen something like we're looking at now with this situation. So they have looked in depth at every single one of those 176 project elements and tried to identify where does it make, nobody wants to cut anything for the record, but where with this option, you know, with the situation that we're facing, where is the best solution? So this recommendation that is here tonight has been, I state with 100% confidence that this has been thoroughly vetted and this is the best recommendation based on the collective analysis, intensive analysis that this entire team has done. We've had the benefit of meeting weekly with Nick of looking at the OACM team minutes of this review. They have been incredibly thorough with the work that they've done. They have reached out to stakeholder groups, they've reached out to the engineering consultants. So I don't think going back for another review is necessarily going to yield a different result because they've already done those iterations.
That's what would yield a different result, is if we were to ask for one. And the question is, are we going to ask for a different proposal or are we going to accept the one before us?
I can say I would be in favor of accepting the proposal that is before us.
Is that something we're voting on?
It's not something that needs a, it doesn't need a formal vote.
It would need consensus, though, if we're going to get out of this conversation. We at least need to have some consensus.
I would accept what has been recommended to us by the engineers and our department.
As would I.
I would as well.
I, I said my piece. I, I think you'll be rebuilding it in two years and then the tennis players will be out. Are, are you looking to replace the fence, though, with that?
Not at this time. It was not included.
Catherine, you have a different question?
Yes, but it's not, it's not related to tennis. So I, in prep for the board meeting tonight, went through the presentations both from the special ads team and from, from, for this conversation as well. And I was just wondering, this, the, the detailed sheet was not included in the present, in the materials in prep for this presentation? We're just seeing this, many of us, for the first time this evening.
Yep.
And in the future, I would like to request that if we're talking about $10 million in projects and we are talking about specific projects, even if the end of the day question is, do we accept or not accept a project, a proposal for cloth? I think it's fair to have those details in advance and I would request that we do for us and for the public. Because this isn't, this doesn't seem like anything, unless I'm mistaken. This is all in line with the level of detail and specificity that we've put out to the public in the past.
And I asked for this on Friday, just so you know. I asked for what the estimates were when we initially put it out to bid. I asked for what the estimates are for the current project now. I wanted to understand where the materials went up because most of these items, if we scoped them out in 2019, we should have really been looking at those in 2022 prior to going to the public with a vote. And so there lies my frustration. And then to get this tonight, so we're all looking at it so we can have the board meeting, you know, where they already have decided that they were removing tennis courts from the scope before we had an opportunity to look at it and have a productive conversation. Yes, I'm not happy about it.
No, I mean, this should be at the facilities committee and I would, I would, this level of detail, I would hope, I should not say should, I would hope, would be at the facilities committee and I would hope that the board would get this in advance as we move forward and I hope that you'll consider that request.
I understand. The presentation in the essence of time, that is included. There was a radio button there. I didn't want to go line by line because we would have been here all night. My apologies for not getting it to you ahead of time.
I appreciate that.
And that won't happen again.
Thank you.
And I did have one thing that I would like to say, just in, in summary. So we had originally 176 elements. We had to cut $10 million. By doing so, we cut 63 elements or one-third of our entire project just to achieve that $10 million. If we were to, and again, this is up to the board. This is a recommendation. I didn't decide we're cutting anything. I want to make sure that we can answer questions. We're providing you with our best recommendations of what to cut, okay? This is the board's decision and we could certainly do that, but I would like to, to, to let you know. If we spend a million on the sixth, the middle school, we still have to spend $140,000 at the high school. So that's 1.14, oh, 100 and, you get it.
$200,000 more.
$1,140,000. That, that now we've got to cut more elements. So we gained one, okay? Now we have 62 and now we've got to cut a whole bunch more. And based on our efforts, we felt that these low priority ones had the least impact on program and what we need to do at Bethlehem School District.
Absolutely. And I think, I, I think what I'm hoping folks hear from this is just that as the folks, as the folks, you know, sitting, you guys are the experts. I'm not going to, you know, I mean, I, but if it is a priority for the community to go forward with one or another project that you're advising, outline, the only way that we can have that conversation is with a full picture of, of what it is we're considering. So thank you. I really appreciate your commitment to that in the future and I really appreciate hearing my concerns.
Thank you.
I think we're good.
I'm sorry?
I said, I think you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have anybody in the audience tonight who would like to address the board on an agenda item, if you could come up to the microphone at this time.
My name's Amy Bloom and I'm a mom of two kids in the district now. One just graduated. First, I need to say as a parent of kids with special needs, it is heartbreaking and horrifying to me. And to the women in the front row over there, I'm, I'm sorry that we just spend a lot more time talking about tennis courts than we did our students with special needs. That was a lot of time on tennis and that's a part of children's education and it's an important thing and I'm not nullifying that in any way. But my kid's entire education is due in part to the women in the front row there and I was having a hard time keeping it together. And I give you guys a lot of credit. So thank you. And I'm not in any way saying everything we just discussed wasn't important. It just feels really hard to have those two things be part of the same meeting. So just, I think sometimes the biggest thing I can ask people to do is kind of know your audience and so tonight that was a hard one. I need to speak about ESY because I know that the best has been tried. But my son's got two years left at this point. And unfortunately, since he was in ninth or 10th grade, COVID hit and COVID was huge. And again, it was managed to an extent that I am very thankful I don't have to have any handle, I didn't have to have any handle in. But that said, COVID happened. My son was getting consistently five hours a day of summer school education. Then it, it fell to zero the first year of summer of COVID because I didn't send them. It was online and that was, that was my personal choice due to his health issues. But since then, we've gone to three hours and I know now we're going back to four. But he's nearing the end of his opportunity for education in our district and I appreciate that us were going to four. I just would still request that there wasn't a reason to go from five until COVID to three. And I really would imply, please, if we can get them back to five hours, he did better. We have comp, community habilitation in my house in the afternoons. I've got a staff person who's with him. And we keep David out and in the community and busy as much as possible, but there's nothing I can offer him in my house that's the same as school. He doesn't have a friend. He doesn't socialize. He doesn't talk. He, like, the, the list of he doesn't is huge and that's David's life from here on out. So the one place he has that he's really happy is school. It is by far his happiest place. He's got the best educators, one of the most incredible speech therapists I've ever met in my entire life, just some phenomenal people. And he's happy when he's here because he likes to be with people. And I can bring all the things in the world into my house that I want to, but I can't bring him, people, I can't bring him that aspect. And him being able to be educated and in PE and in art and in all those other pieces of the day, it's just really important to him. And so four hours, I did appreciate and I did notice it and, and I, I want to give to the fact that, like, you did make a change. You did hear us and you did make a change. I just would request, if it's possible, and you're going to do two bus runs anyways, to look at the idea, you're talking about doing the work program. You know, getting them on campus for a couple hours, but then going off campus to do a job or something like that. Okay, that's not what you're talking about. Okay, then that helps. I was thinking that time of moving would be a lot of time. Perfect, okay. There's always a lot of moving around, okay. I know that you guys were saying a couple different times, Harry, you were saying that some of the reasons people didn't send their kids to summer school were camps and other activities. And 110%, there's a population of kids, so if they can go to the YMCA camp, they are going to do that because that's great for them. But these skills and intensive skills, children are not those kids. I can't find a place in the world that'll take my kids. I would love camp. My grandfather owned a summer camp. My two uncles run summer camps. I ran a summer camp. Like, I'm a summer camp human. It's my blood. So it's heartbreaking to me that I can't put my kids in camp. So I, I know that that's all well and good and going on vacation and all that other stuff, but that's not the nuts and bolts for a percentage of our kids, the ones who are the most at need and most at risk. So I think a lot of times you hear from a, a bulk of parents, because the majority of parents have got typically developing kids. And then you've got some who've got some lower level needs, then you've got some who've got higher level needs. So we do hear these things. I'm not saying we don't, but those of us with higher level needs kids are a smaller minority. And then on top of that, if we're choosing not to send our kids, there's likely another reason. With three hours a day, a lot of times it's just easier to get a comm have worker to come to the house and be there for eight hours. I do also want to just speak briefly to the idea that I think job sharing for teachers is phenomenal, but I worry about job sharing for teachers with kids who've got the highest level of need and those kids who need the consistency. For my son, it's hard enough and we changed teachers over the summer for a six-week program. And then doing three weeks and three weeks is just also hard. I think for an OT or a speech therapist, I can see it working, but I think for some teachers, that would be hard for the kids, although great for the teachers. And, and that was it. I just, I wanted to kind of at least come and say my part, so.
Thank you, Amy.
Hi, my name's Amanda Harmath. I have a daughter Amelia. She's only in second grade. Also, I'll speak to you that, that was really hard to listen to about the asphalt. I went to Gilderun. I played, I ran track, played basketball, and I will just say that if you're an athlete, you're going to find a way to play. It's a lot of first world problems and we have kids that have some real needs. So that was really just really hard to sit through and talking about the budget when we have kids that are struggling and can, you know, use, a lot of you guys could use some of that resource to put in to help our kids that, you know, are the lower end. It, it's disappointing and it's very heartbreaking to hear because we are fighting every day for our kids to take them to the appointments, to take them, to put them into all the programs, to get them socialized and everything. And, you know, three hours is not enough time, you know? I don't think by the time that they get there, get them settled in, you know, then they're already coming back home. And even, even the four hours, it's kind of one of those things like, I think you should do the five hours. And, I mean, we ha, I have a daughter that she is just, she's somebody that wants to be very social. She likes to be around people. She wants to make a lot of friends. So it's kind of like, last summer, it was very hard for us. And I'll just say that, you know, we are lucky that I'm a stay-at-home mom, that my husband owns his own business because not everyone, not every parent can be able to be called up and then have to come pick up their kid 10 minutes, you know, after something, an incident happens with their kid or something from a program. And just a side issue, but it, it's happened to a couple of the parents. But I think five hours would help get the kids more used to the teachers, more used to the building. They can make friends. I, the summers are long for our kids. They, they struggle a lot. They struggle to make friends, to socialize. It's not as easy for them. Even in that two-week or three-week period when that, like, summer school ends and that, that waiting period, that is really tough for us as parents to try to find something for our kids to do and then putting them back into summer school. And then when summer school ends and then waiting to get them back into school, like, that's just like a really big, like, struggle. And, I mean, I know you guys are doing your best with it, but just saying, like, it, it would help, the five hours would help our kids because sometimes that's the only where, place that they can feel like, you know, they have a buddy, a friend, you know, that they can just feel normal, feel like themselves. So I would appreciate if you guys could consider that, you know, extending that a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Emily Field. I have three kids in the district. I wasn't going to talk because the two women that spoke before me spoke probably a lot better than I'll speak. I did bring these concerns to the board last spring. I still feel, you know, the same way. My daughter Addie had a lot of struggles this summer in a three-hour program. It wasn't enough time for her. I know Amanda touched on transitions and, you know, it's hard. Once a kid, you know, I struggle getting Addie on the bus. So that's like the first hurdle. And then it's getting to school and getting to an OT session and a PT session. So thinking about, you know, if she has one bad day, that could set her off and I'm getting a phone call and that's, you know, that's three hours. And I just think she needs, she's a kid who needs more time for transitions. You know, 10 minutes in between to have a break, have a snack, sit with her friend, listen to a song with her teacher. I think adding in the specials would be a great addition for the program, you know? Adding in PE, letting her do art or music, which are things that she, you know, really thrives on. She is a kid who loves school, just like Amy and Amanda said, you know, that's where, she loves it. She asks about school on the weekend. Can I go to school? She loves her teacher. She loves her friends. And, you know, it is hard as a parent. I have two other typical kids who I can send to summer. I have two other typical kids who I can send to summer camp, and they do fine. But, you know, for Addie, that's her space where she's with her friends, and she's with her peers, and she's with her teachers who love her and support her, even though, you know, she has different, and she has a disability. So I think, you know, adding an extra hour would be great for her, and I know it's not going to work for all families, but I guess I'm just worried, like, can everything that you guys want to do, can that all be achieved in one hour? You know, can you add in specials? Can you add in, you know, more fun for these kids and more opportunities for, you know, recreation or playing on the playground? Can that all be achieved in one additional hour? You know, maybe it can be, and I'm willing to give it a shot. I think it's better than nothing, but I also think, you know, three or four years ago, before COVID, kids were getting five hours, and our kids still have disabilities, you know? She's, she's behind her peers, and she needs all that time and all that support. I mean, she's eight years old, so she's going to need that for the rest of her life, and I think, you know, just thinking about taking away that time, like, that, the summer is hard, like Amanda said. Routines and structure are what our kids with disabilities thrive on, and I think, you know, just trying to make the best quality program, maybe it can be achieved in four hours, but I think exploring, could we do it in five? And if you have the staff, and if we have the money and the budget, you know, if that's not a concern, then we should really try to push for that, especially for those populations with, you know, the intensive skills. I think you said it was 20 or 25 kids, or the skills program, which might only be 25 to 30. So it's a small percentage of students. At the end of the day, you know, we're Bethlehem, we're the number one district, but I think we have a long way to go with the special ed kids. So thank you for listening to our concerns tonight. I appreciate all the work you do and all the work that the special ed department does as well. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items one through five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through seven.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through six.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items one through three.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. Our next board meeting is actually next week, on November 2nd, anticipating executive session at 6:00, and the regular board meeting at 7:00, and then the, and that's at the middle school. The meeting following that is on November 16th at Hamegrail, and that is also anticipating executive session at 6:00, and the remainder of the meeting is during 7:00. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Need a second. All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned.